Good evening and welcome. I'd like to call the meeting to order, please.
Mrs. De Silva?
Here.
Mrs. Gillis?
Here.
Mr. Valentine?
Here.
Mrs. Messick?
Here.
And Mrs. Rigby?
Here. Pledge of allegiance, Mr. Boney, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Canada, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's recommended to approve this evening's agenda as presented as their motion.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Valentine, second. Second. Second by Mrs. De Silva. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. De Silva?
Yes.
Mrs. Gillis?
Yes.
Mrs. Messick?
Yes.
And Mrs. Rigby?
Yes. Motion passes five to zero. At this time, it's time for public participation, so if there's anyone in the audience who has anything they would like to say.
Mary, you were the first one.
Thank you, and thank you, everybody, for being here again this evening. I think there's a big difference between the last time you were here and this evening, and it's just a really good example. We have many in the district where anxiety is high because understandably, you need what you need to be able to succeed, but when all said and done, we're at a point now, I know it's not perfect, much better than where we were before, and so I just want to thank all of you for coming, for communicating directly, for being patient, and we appreciate you very much, so thank you. We're going to move on now to the Board of Education committees. Does anybody have anything from committee reports for this evening? No? Okay. Next up is our student representative this evening.
Okay. Can you guys hear me? Yeah, okay, perfect. So, just in general, everyone's excited for Hoco to come up. Kaufman's is the 13th, and Jerome's and Sayota's are both on the 27th. Class meetings have been currently happening just to adjust to the new school year, a chance for everyone to regroup with all the new policies. You know, the phone policy doing pretty well, actually, and coming together as a school. At Kaufman, Kaufman had its first football game last weekend. They sadly didn't win, but still a great game, and their new alma mater was sung throughout the student section. At Jerome, we're fortunately having an amazing time adjusting the new freshmen to the building. They're doing really well. We recently taught students how to write an email. I just did that today, and how to effectively communicate with teachers because that's very, very important. Again, just reminders on the phone policy. We're doing engaging activities to involve people skills because some of them don't know how to make good eye contact yet, but we're working on that. Class meetings have also been going on, as previously stated. We're just talking to the seniors about expectations and phone policies because we're the ones adjusting to that, not anyone else, really. Reminders about classwork and holding the initiative and taking responsibility. Workshops for seniors have been going on, especially with Common App opening in the College SA. Football game against Westerville South, and the student section really showed up last Friday. We have our upcoming Club Fair, Club Fair, excuse me, that focuses on diversity and inclusion, which is really important. At Sayota, Sayota Football kicked off their season with the win over Reynoldsburg, and their freshman mentors continue to meet and help freshmen with their transition to their new building. And lastly, at Emerald Campus, students are getting used to their new schedules and adjusting to the module schedule, which, another really good opportunity, the Career Closet is up and running again and accepting donations for any professional attire, and this closet is meant to help students acquire professional outfits for work, interviews, and events such as interviews, like job interviews. Yeah, thank you.
I just have a question on the closet.
Yeah.
How do we donate, and where do we donate?
I believe, so I'm actually not the expert on this, but I believe it's just in, like, the front. A seal, a seal actually runs it. So if you have any questions, yeah. A seal, you want to come up here? Okay, but.
Great, thank you. Okay. Moving on to reports and items from the superintendent's office. Dr. Marshausen?
As I get into my report this evening, I would note that there is the first reading of a policy, and that first reading brings our existing cellphone policy, personal communication policy, communication policy into compliance with the new state law. This is a first reading for that policy. Tomorrow night, we begin or continue our journey for redistricting. We will have a webinar tomorrow night where myself and Mr. Matt Cropper of Cropper GIS will outline the process, answer some frequently asked questions, and let people know what the next month will bring in advance of the public input sessions. That's kind of like the reveal on September 29th, where at 6:00 PM at Kaufman, then 7:30 at Jerome, we will hold the public information system, have a gallery walk with the new maps for the attendance zones for the '26-'27 school year with the high school attendance zones. Between September 29th and October 12th, we will be taking public comments via the website on the maps that are provided. We took public comments in a similar process when we did middle school and elementary, and just to let the public know, there were changes made to the maps. Mr. Cropper and his team go through all of the comments and make adjustments if adjusted, adjustments are necessary. And then, at the board meeting on November 10th, which will be at Sayota High School, we will finalize those maps in a presentation to the board. That final, that finalization of the maps will then allow high school students and their families, if they are in an affected area, to make the decision if they want to remain at the high school that they are currently attending, or if they would want to go to the high school that they've been redistricted to. So, all current high school students will have the option to remain at the high school that they are currently attending. If there is a change, the student and their family would be required to provide transportation to get them to the high school they're currently attending, but that will be an option for all families. You know, as we talk today as a team, this is getting real. I don't think I can go out in public without someone asking me about redistricting, and I know it's a frequent topic of conversation in, about any public meeting that we're in. We are going to continue to ask people to go to the websites, set website with their comments and suggestions. We also have a really lengthy frequently asked questions page there, and we'll continue to point people to that frequently asked questions page as we go through this process. In order for our team to continue leading the district of this size, we are not going to take individual meetings about redistricting, and we will not be going to HOAs or outside meetings to discuss redistricting. All public comments will be handled through Matt Cropper's website and through the communications form and comment form that's available on that website. So I think it's just important for everybody to understand that there are no favorites. We're not gonna, we can't possibly start going to individual areas or take individual meetings when it comes to redistricting. We have also, and our staff has done a phenomenal job, working through some very challenging situations with the middle school redistricting process, and I think it's important for the community to know, we have made no exceptions to the attendance boundaries for middle school, and we will make no exceptions for the attendance boundaries for high school. And it's going to be critical that we maintain consistent with that process in order to ensure the integrity of our redistricting process. When we look at the criteria for redistricting, and this will be shared in more depth tomorrow night, there are eight criteria for redistricting, and these are the same criteria we used for middle schools. It's important to know that all eight are equally important, and when we look at all eight of these criteria, if we were to place priority on one over another, it throws them all out of whack. And Mr. Cropper and I have had some lengthy conversations about where this could turn out and where this could end up when we get to those final recommendations, and he has experts from across the country who are working on this very process. As an internal planning team, we had a Zoom today, and it's interesting that the guy he has who's coming up with the options doesn't know Dublin, doesn't know our politics, doesn't, he, I think in Maryland or Virginia is where he is. This is a numbers process, and it's a process that we're looking at all eight of these criteria when it comes to what's the best way for this to turn out. I believe we will get to an option in a final plan that if we were going to look at these eight areas and look green, yellow, and red, this is met, this is eh, and then this is a negative. I believe there are options that have no red marks out of the eight, but if you do place priority over one out of the eight, you create red marks in other areas. And I'm grateful for the conversations that we've had with Mr. Cropper and his expertise at doing this across the country because this is why we're not doing it ourselves. We're working with an expert to ensure we create something that balances our schools, establishes contiguous zones. We've had conversations. It is my intent to not split any middle school more than twice so that we have that continuity in our middle schools. It's also our intent, as we look at these criteria, what does the future look like? And when we look at that future growth component and making it so we don't have to go through this again as a district in five years or in eight years, you know, we'd like a decade-proof plan. Does the board have any questions on any of this process?
I don't have a question, but I would just like to point out that when the final maps are presented in November, that that is, just presenting those to the board, we will not be voting to approve those.
Correct. The Board of Education has a lot of specific authority under Ohio statute when it comes to what you do for a district, how you do policy. There are a couple things that, under Ohio law, are reserved for the superintendent, and this is one of them. Where teachers teach once they're employed, and where students go to school when they're enrolled is a responsibility of the superintendent. Summer improvements. We've heard an awful lot about athletics, but I also want to point out all the other great things that Mr. Stark and our team have done. We have new fire alarms in many of our buildings. Those of you who attend Jerome know that they were a little sensitive on the first day, and thank you for that fire drill early in the morning on the first day, but we tested it and we got it. New electrical, I think you're looking here, it sells, which at one point, the switches weren't there. Like, you couldn't turn off some of the breakers. So, a brand-new electrical room itself, brand-new HVAC systems in several buildings, and several of our buildings are having HVAC systems that are in the process. We've gotten Riverside functioning for this year. We'll finish that project next summer. If you know where my office is, I get to watch a crane lift really heavy stuff up on the roof at Kaufman High School as we're still doing roof repairs, and I'm just going, I can't fall, that can't fall, because we had a cabinet meeting today, and we're all mesmerized and distracted, like kids with the crane moving this heavy thing over on the roof. So, some of this work's still going on. Elevators. About half the elevators we needed repaired, we got this year. We're going to get more elevators next year. A lot of the stuff that we do, and if you're a homeowner, you know, it's that stuff behind the walls, in the basement, in those crawl spaces, that's what gets you. So, I'm so thankful that in our years working together, we've had assessments done in our building. We're working diligently to get to things as they approach end of life before we get a failure and before it disrupts education. And Mr. Stark and his team have done a phenomenal job doing that, so thanks. This is a lot of the stuff that goes unseen until it doesn't, and we're grateful that we're doing everything we can to make sure that we take care of these things before they fail and we have students in our buildings. First day of school, you know, as I said in our convocation, and as I met with our seniors last week, I don't care how many years you've been doing this, the first day of school always brings butterflies. It's always exciting, and it's always so much fun. It's crazy that kids are like, "I don't want to go back to school," and then you watch them interact with their peers, and they're all happy to be there. So, great start to the first year. Mr. Killian and his crew, and we'll approve bus routes and bus stops later in our meeting, do a phenomenal job, and just realize, we have new roads that don't show up on Google Map yet. We have new streets and bus stops that weren't there when the school year ended, and the job our transportation team does to get students to and from is absolutely phenomenal. And Dr. Schwanke and I were talking, the number of non-English-speaking students that our staff works with every day, and to watch the skill that takes place with our teachers in our buildings, it's so impressive. So, so great. We're in, preschool comes on Wednesday as we will welcome our largest group of three- and four-year-olds ever as we open a new space at the preschool and get those kids even younger than ever. So, when we look at what we get to do, we're going to have more three- and four-year-olds. We have five-year-olds all day as we watch lunches with kindergarten students who are there for the whole day, so lots of great things. And if you're ever not having a great day, watching kindergarteners in school will just lift your spirits because they are all excited to be there. And then, finally, a couple stakeholder engagement things. The Property Tax Reform Group has been meeting weekly, have been looking at some options that could be legislative alternatives to simple overriding the governor's vetoes when it comes to some of those tax-related propositions. We've heard from experts from inside and outside of education. I have been so blessed to get to work with county auditors and county commissioners from across the state to hear different viewpoints and different positions, and what I'm most proud of is the group has stuck to the commitment from each member of the group to have respectful conversations even when we disagree. There are a lot of varying opinions in there, and it's been phenomenal to have public meetings with the media there, but everybody to be respectful as we work through different recommendations. I believe that we will end up in a place where there are short-term recommendations with some specifics, and then long-term recommendations, which would be probably less consensus in the room, but maybe we need to look at improving efficiency of services across the state and overlapping services and those types of things. There's simply not time for a group of 11 people between our first date and September 30th, when the governor has asked us to make recommendations to tackle some of those major issues that would require much more thought. But it's an honor and a privilege to serve on this group, and again, I'm learning a ton, which is so much fun to have those deep conversations. And then, finally, with the help of our communications team, as we go into this year, the Leading Thoughts Blog is a blog that will be added to our weekly updates to our community where our leaders in the district, not just myself, will be able to share thoughts, will be able, kind of a stream of consciousness on the things that we're working on at the district level, being open and transparent about some of the struggles that we have from time to time, and some of the issues that I think it's important that we, as a community, talk about. Our Press Pause series was so well-received and has garnered us a lot of attention at the state and national level as we engage parents, as we talk about the fact that raising children in a digital age isn't something we can just do at school. It's something that requires that partnership between the home and the school. We get kids for about six and a half, seven hours a day. In some cases, in their, with, in extracurriculars, they may be with us longer, but we can't do that alone, and we can't do it without that partnership. We had our students talk about cell phones, and I got to talk to some of our Kaufman administrators at the football game on Friday night, and one of the administrators said, "Kids were playing euchre at lunch and talking, and one of the things our principals have noticed is that kids are done eating faster, and they get up like they're going to go to class, and they don't realize how much faster they've eaten. It's because they're not looking at their phones and they're talking." And I knew, and I had faith this was going to go okay. There are schools who have been militant about it, who have gone with the magnetic bags. I'm like, "We don't need to do that. We just need to kind of change the norm." And I talked to Mr. Aron, who said, "He'll go up to kids, and they'll have a phone out, and they don't even realize they do it," but it's made us as adults, when we're in school spaces, if I have out my phone in the hall, a kid will be like, "Hey, Dr. Marshausen, put that away." We don't even realize how much we do it as adults when it's just natural to pick up a phone and death scroll or look at emails when you could be having conversations. So, to our students, thank you, because I love it when you point it out to me, because then I'm having conversations with you, and I think we're all learning from this process, and we're going to be in a better place, and we're going to get there without a lot of pain and agony. It's just reminders and conversations, and changing behaviors takes time, and I think we're on the right path. Any questions for members of the board? All right. Mr. Carr?
Just a few things on the agenda this evening. We have one donation from Davis Middle School PTO to the Middle School for Athletic Uniforms. We have appropriation changes. These are our federal grants here. The actual allocations were released late in the year. Typically, they try to do it before, prior to June 30th, and as we're going into the new fiscal year starting July 1, with what was going on in the federal government at that time and so forth, the ALSA allocations got released late, and so this is just, we put in an initial, what we thought estimates of allocations would be to start the year on July 1. These are to true-up to the actual allocation amounts that were allocated to us, so appropriation changes. And then, we have one transfer is to close the class of 2024, actually a year behind on this one, but to close out those funds from Jerome. Then, on other stuff and future meetings, we will be presenting the five-year forecast on the October 13th board meeting. As I think I mentioned before, the date, the due date for those has gotten moved up to October 15th. If you were Chris Valentine, will probably remember, it used to be October 31st, and then it was changed to November 30th, and now we're back into the middle of October here in the 15th. So, we'll do it, get it approved on the 13th, and have everything filed by the 15th for ODU. So, other than that, any questions?
Okay, it's recommended by the treasurer to approve items 5B through 5D. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. De Silva, second by Mrs. Messick. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. De Silva?
Yes.
Mrs. Messick?
Yes.
Mrs. Gillis?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
And Mrs. Rigby?
Yes. Motion passes five to zero. Reports from academics and student learning. Dr. Schwanke?
We have no reports this evening. Thank you.
Moving on to operations. Mr. Stark?
We have a few things for your approval tonight. The first is an agreement with TriStar Transportation. You see- You've seen this in the past, these are one-year agreements we have with them. They like to update their pricing. What TriStar does is they're one of three companies we have for specialized transportation. If there's a reason that a, a student can't go on the bus with the other kids, they need some special help, we hire these firms to help us with the specialized transportation. So this is a one-year agreement with TriStar. There is no amount, it's just the rates, because we're not quite sure how much we're going to use them throughout the year. So this is for the board to approve the agreement and the rates. Next up is, this is a, a new one for this board, this is, the USDA has guidance on how much we should charge for a meal, and it's an algorithm that's a, it's a bit complicated. We have to work with Mr. Kern on this, about how much money that they give us and how much money we need to get when we charge it. So there's a, a big raise here tonight for staff meals that are going to go from $3.90 to $4 per meal, pending board approval tonight. The next two items are transportation. As Dr. Marshausen mentioned before, this is the bus stops that Brian Killian put together, and this goes to the board for annual review and approval. Tremendous amount of work for Brian and his whole team to put together these bus stops on an annual basis. They start this, you know, they're, they're working on them all throughout the year, and then when the summer comes and enrollment changes happen and there's shifts, it's, it's just quite a bit of work to do. And the last item is more payment in lieu for transportation. You'll see these more throughout the year. The way it works now is instead of going once per year, we, we ask the board for these payment of those as we receive them. Any questions?
Okay, it's recommended by the superintendent that the board approve items 8A through 8D. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Valentine, is our second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Gillis. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Gillis?
Yes.
Mrs. De Silva?
Yes.
Mrs. Messick?
Yes.
And Mrs. Rigby.
Yes. Motion passes five to zero. Human Resources.
Good evening, members of the board. I'll start tonight in our certified agenda section. You'll see a retirement for the end of this school year, our first so far in terms of teacher retirements, and then three resignations. Julie Bache will retire from Davis Middle School as a phys ed teacher with 32 years in the district. The teacher resignation, it appears is a result of a licensure issue that recently came about, and so she's going to be a substitute for us. We have a teacher hire that happened since our last meeting, and then you'll also see a certified substitute recommendation for an, an EL teacher on this agenda, too. You'll see additional six-period pay requests that are on due to changes in schedules that we get at, at the beginning of the year, and then extended time for those certified staff members who work beyond the traditional teacher calendar year. The unpaid leave of absence does require board approval of more than five days, so that's on for your approval. Then the supplementals that are on tonight primarily cover athletics, but you'll notice that some of them are music-related, administrative, club, and building leadership requests, which is pretty typical for beginning of year. And then moving on to our classified agenda, there are seven resignations, three retirements. The retirements, Kelly Grimm will retire as a bus driver with 20 years in Dublin, Tim Rice retiring as a custodian with 30 years in Dublin City Schools, and then Billy Woods will retire as a custodian with 19 years in Dublin. Lots of new hires for the beginning of the year, we have 13 of them, and then several salary changes that are on for your consideration and approval. The final items are several stipends, which is pretty typical, again, for this time of year with the beginning of the school year. Many of these are related to support services. These include content leads, curriculum work, specific work in our student support services area. We also have the stipends on tonight for mentors that work with our newly licensed, certified staff that hold RE licenses, and then payment for those staff members that we've hired that attended new teacher orientation a few weeks back. And that concludes the HR portion of tonight's agenda.
One quick question for Mrs. Marple. For the Project Lead the Way teacher training, are those individual PDs, or are they content leads, or are other teachers doing that?
So that is our curriculum for some of our middle school electives, and they will not release the curriculum until the teacher gets trained, if they haven't yet taught. So those are specific teachers. In this case, these are teachers that did not teach the course last year, that teach the course this coming year.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, if there are no further questions, it's recommended by the superintendent that the board approve items 10A through 10C. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Valentine, second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Messick. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Messick?
Yes.
Mrs. De Silva?
Yes.
Mrs. Gillis?
Yes.
And Mrs. Rigby.
Yes. Motion passes five to zero. Anything for future agenda items from anybody? Okay. Sorry, motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Messick, second by Mrs. De Silva. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Meeting is adjourned.